No, not sure if it'll work, Deb.
I'm trying to call him. Oh, wait.
Is it working now? Looks like it.
It says it is, but I'm not getting it yet. Are you, John?
I forgot to turn it on. I'm just opening it right now.
It looked like it worked for me. What was on our YouTube screen? John, does it appear to be working on your end?
It's not. I left him a message and sent him a text. So I guess maybe keep it going and then...
Maybe it's working. I can see it.
You can?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna start recording it. I went through YouTube. I didn't use the custom livestream, so you're probably just not accessing it the other way. I'll start recording now then.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's working.
Okay.
Can I call the meeting to... Okay, I'll call the meeting to order and ask... Is that me echoing, "Ask for motions for executive session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiations of monitor contract and individual contracts pursuant to the Taylor Law"? Michelle and Jen, all in favor? Great, thank you. We'll see you at the next link.
There is Vern. So it is 6:15. If you don't mind, we'll go ahead and start with the public hearing for the safety plan modifications. We've invited Mr. Tenney here. One of his many job descriptions and duties is the oversight of our safety plan. And as of recent, we've had to make some changes to those. So the way it works is we do a public hearing. Vern will explain some of those changes, answer any questions you may have, and then at the next board meeting, it would be set for approval. So Vern, I'll turn it over to you to explain some of those changes.
Thank you, Jamie, and thank you for having me come tonight to just explain some of these changes. First, when we began reviewing the district's safety plan, we followed some guidance from our regional BOSI's safety expert. She provided us with a template to review the plan to make sure that we were hitting all of our required items. So each committee member had a copy of the template, and they were asked to go through and provide feedback that we collected through a Google document of all of those areas that we would need to address per the screening template that we received. After about a month of, you know, committee members providing feedback and us reviewing it, we found that we had just a couple areas that I would categorize into the following that we needed to adjust. So the first one was we needed to update our preventative efforts and/or our partnerships that we have. Part of the safety plan requires us to identify every preventative effort that we have in our district. Two of those that were absent through nobody's fault was our partnership with Safe Harbors of the Finger Lakes. They provide our primary elementary students with personal safety lessons. So we, all we did was update that in the plan that had already been occurring, so it just wasn't documented in the plan. Another item was our partnership with the city fire department. We have the fire department provide fire safety and home fire safety lessons for our students in the primary elementary. So we updated those two areas for our preventative efforts and partnerships. The next area I would say I would call functional edits. We went through and really scrutinized to make sure that we had names because of people who've retired, titles have changed, phone numbers have changed. So we went through and, you know, updated all of those areas. We also updated the transportation inventory through the help with Seth Clearman and Mike McLean. They scrutinized that and updated it for us. Another area was uniformity of language and inside the plan itself. The plan has gone through quite a few evolutions, and when somebody works on one section, they might not be mindful of other sections. So we, we went through and really looked at uniformity, and the feedback we had from committee members was, you know, you'd have people in the plan itself, and it might just say their title, but they have no idea who the person is. Or they would put the person and not know what their title was. So to make the plan accessible to anyone, regardless of whether or not you are familiar with the district or not, we made sure that we have names with titles and their appropriate contact information. We found that that level of uniformity really does help. We found that that level of uniformity really does help, you know, clarify a lot of what we do and who's on what team, et cetera. That was essentially the, you know, the gist of the edits we made. I can go through and give you more details of a couple line items if you would like, but that's where our edits to the plan really resided.
Questions or comments from anyone? Okay, thanks, Vern. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we have about 10 minutes until the board meeting begins. If people would like to mute their, mute themselves and turn their cameras off. Until that point, I can put up the shared screen again so people can see. We'll be back in session at 6:30.
Perfect. Thank you.
Welcome back. We have some people joining us in the waiting room, so I think I'll start admitting some. That means you'll see some of our administrators and some of our retirees will be recognizing this evening. Figure that way you have a couple minutes to say hello to them.
Hello, Sumantel. Where's your party hat?
Oh, no party hats.
Where's the baby?
The baby is at the baby's house. The in-laws have been in town since Thursday, so I haven't seen the baby since.
Oh.
I'm having a little withdrawal.
I'll bet you are. She is darling.
She is something.
Hi, Lynn. Nice to see you. It's been so long.
It has been. I've been very dressed up. I've been sweating all day at school here, so.
Faith is here. I've got 6:30, Deb. Are we good? We're, there you are, Deb. Okay to start? Great, thank you. Welcome, everybody. I will call the meeting to order and ask everyone to stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, how we wish we were all together in person, but we're just thrilled that we have all these really wonderful, special people with us tonight. And we're going to get to the part of the meeting that requires tissues in just a few minutes. I'll turn it over to, well, tissues for us, maybe not for you all, but we'll see. I'll turn it over to Jamie right now.
Good evening, everybody. Deb, I believe I made you the co-host, and I know we're waiting on a couple more to come in, if you can help out with that. Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Great that you're here with us. I'll make my part as quick as possible because I would like to get on to honoring our retirees as quickly as possible as well. That should be the highlight of the evening. But while we're doing that, I would like to share my screen and just give everybody a brief update as to where we are with kind of the school year winding down. Hopefully, we can stop talking about COVID in the very near future, but not yet. There's still some updates that are worth sharing, and I think everybody needs to be aware of, which you probably are. But I'm assuming you can see the screen. Thumbs up if you can. I see some thumbs up and nods. Yes, thank you. Great. Let's jump into our numbers. So our numbers are in a positive, good situation. Positive, word positive, I guess, can be confusing. They're in a good situation right now in that they are trending very well. And as you'll see, today, we have zero students in isolation and two students in quarantine. And so since about midweek last week up until today, we don't have any cases amongst our students. It's not entirely true. We do have one student that is placed out of district. They don't attend school here at all in Canadega. They attend school out of district that we just found out has COVID today. But for the case of reporting, because they're not here, we don't report them as such. Every now and then we have one out of district, but our numbers have trended in the, in the direction we want. Moving forward, we were unsure of what was going to happen this week with masks. A lot of things were changing, and this is really basically where we are. Governor Cuomo gave a press conference today, and he did say that the letter that Dr. Zucker wrote on behalf of New York State Department of Health last week on Friday went to the CDC, and the CDC said that they were okay with students and staff and everybody taking off their masks when outside. They were not okay with that yet inside. And so Governor Cuomo said, for that reason, we will permit schools, if they choose, to allow masks to be taken off while outside. And then, but at this time, they weren't allowed, we're not allowed to do so inside. If you were reading the message that came through Brave Square as we were waiting for the, the meeting to start, you will see that we informed our community that we're ready to allow masks to be taken off when they're outside. And that's not just for recess and phys ed. If a class goes outside, they can take their masks off. If we have spectators at sporting events, they can take their masks off if they wish. It covers all of those things based on what we know. At this time, we don't have any formal guidance in writing. All we really have is what the governor has says and said in his press conference, and that was part of the communication tonight. More information may be forthcoming, but that seems to be the way most districts are approaching it across the state at this time. He also did allude to, he said, get ready for masks to be lifted and not required come September. You know, certainly he didn't make a decision on that, but he alluded to it. That it's likely will be without mask requirements in September if we're, you know, we continue to trend in this direction. And then he also said, and this was new, once a state reaches 70% vaccination for adults, pretty much all the COVID restrictions will be listed or lifted. And at this point right now, we're at 68.6%. So we're very close. We're 1.4% away from the 70%. So what that means is this is what will be lifted down here, and these are slides from his actual presentation. Capacity restrictions will be lifted. Social distancing will be lifted. Cleaning and disinfection protocols, which some people wish would stay around because things have been much, much more clean, just all over the place, not just in schools. Health screening would be lifted at different businesses and things like that. Having to collect contact tracing information would be lifted. But again, mask requirement remain, remains in place consistent with the CDC. And then down here, it says that when we hit 70%, some things will be lifted, but not for everybody. And you'll see schools, what we were included, that just because we get to the 70% maybe in a week from now, a week and a half from now, doesn't mean that it's lifted for us. Schools will still have to follow the guidelines, he said during his press conference. So that's kind of where we are with COVID at this point. We're trending in the right directions. We're seeing the valve open up some more, and, you know, we're allowed to do a few more things. I would encourage on these hot days, if possible, to take, take classrooms outside, find a shady spot where kids can remove their masks and get a break when possible. The other thing is, this is a busy time of the year. I wanted to show this visual for all of you just to kind of grasp everything that's going on between now and commencement. There's quite a bit happening, and, you know, we're trying to retain a lot of our traditions and history as, as we can in whatever format we can. I know this past weekend, we had our senior ball at Lincoln Hill Farms, and it looked beautiful. What a, what a great evening that was, and I've heard nothing but really great reviews for that. And so, you know, just thinking creatively and, and keeping traditions in place, but you can see everything going on. It's busy. We have some Regents exams happening here. We're still doing the eighth grade walk to the academy, one for the gray day, one for the cherry day. And on the 24th and 25th of June, I'm sorry, the 23rd and 24th of June will be half days for UPK eight, and then no student day on the 25th, just to kind of give some context around that. You know, Camp Bristol Hills is happening, just not at Bristol Hills. It'll be happening at middle school. And they're having a lot of the same presenters and really making it a great experience for the students, even though we can't go to Bristol Hills overnight like they have in the past. So you see a variety of things happening there. The other thing to point out, and this is a little confusing, and you may have questions about it. Again, you'll have this presentation to refer to, is the end of the year for the academy. The way it worked and the way Regents felt, it really would have taken some days away from students, so we had to move some things. So next week, not this week, but next week, you'll see on the 14th Monday will be a cherry in-person day, and Tuesday will be a cherry in-person day. Wednesday will be a gray in-person day for the academy on Wednesday. And their second in-person day next week will be on Friday. So the gray group will end up being in person on Wednesday and Friday. The reason is the Regents exam for ELA is here, and we wanted those students to be able to get their two days of hybrid instruction. Then on the 21st is a Braves bonus day. It's, it's the day where students who, you know, they haven't been able to cross the finish line, they have some more work to do. They'll be invited in, or they can elect to come in as well, but they'll come in and they will work to get anything final minute done to close out the quarter. And then we have Regents exams for the rest of the time. And again, students only come in on Regents days if they have a Regents. And so I just wanted to point out that it's a little different with the gray students in person Wednesday and Friday. And that's all. You know, my report is fairly short and sweet, and we like to always show pictures of fantastic things happening around campus because they continue to do so. And so I just wanted to point those out. I will stop sharing my screen, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Jamie? Okay, Carlin, you are up.
Hi. So there's not a lot to report other than the scheduling stuff that Mr. Farr just did. So there's a lot of things coming up for seniors, so way to steal my thunder there, but it's okay. But there are some things coming up for seniors, and that's super exciting. Ball was really fun. We had, there was a lot of good reviews about it. The venue is really pretty. It was, I know it's different than our normal venue, but a lot of people liked it, and it ended up being a really nice night for a lot of people, so that was really good. Again, I really won't go over the, the details of the events because he kind of went over that, but yeah, seasons are going great. People are happy that most of people who were taking APs and stuff are glad that their testing, like their testings are done, and now they just have Regents, those who are taking it, but those are the younger classes. So, yeah, a lot of people are excited, and sports seasons are winding down. Some people are going into their sectionals this week so that hopefully next time, next meeting, you guys will hear some good news and good results from those tournaments. But yeah, so lots of good things happening.
Carlin, you're graduating in a couple of weeks. How are you feeling about your walking across the stage?
I'm feeling pretty good, and I think a lot of other people are too. I think they, a lot of people are just really, as sad as it sounds, they're really ready to get to that point and really put a put a cap on everything. People are reaching that where they're like, you know, this has been as good as we can make it, and they can appreciate that, and they're ready to graduate, so.
Well, we commend all of you for the great job and role models you've been all year. And we especially thank you. You've done a wonderful job as our student rep, and we really appreciate the time and the communication that you brought to the table. So we'll give you a round of applause. So much. Let's see, we have minutes up for approval. I'll ask for motions, please. Cheryl, and a second. Julianne, questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? That carries unanimously, Deb. And now we get to our recognition.
Thank you very much. So we will go, I have a sheet with the folks that are here. I think we're only missing one at this point. But I will start with kind of an order on my sheet, and that would be Faith Shaw. And so I believe Matt Shragi, you'll be talking about Faith. Great to see you, Faith.
Yes, indeed. Great to see you, Faith. Welcome, everybody. I want to say a few things about Faith Shaw. Faith spent, she described in her retirement letter, 25 happy and productive years with the Canadegwa City School District. Predominantly, Faith served as the welcoming face to many of our families as our district registrar for about 14 years, from 2006 to October of 2020. Prior to that, Faith served in a variety of roles, including, including seven years as a teacher at the primary school and, and as secretary of the elementary school office for four years. Faith is known for her kind spirit and positive attitude. She's incredibly conscientious and generally cared about the experience that families had as they joined the district. She was always willing to support families by answering their questions in order to help them have a good experience and feel welcomed. Faith is also much revered by her colleagues. Always easy to talk to and willing to help. Faith remains a friend to many. Faith was known around the office as the go-to person for gift ideas, which I know I access pretty frequently. She kept a running list of likes and interests for each staff member. This too speaks to her care for others. We hope that Faith is still feeling happy and productive in retirement, as we recognize her today. Welcome, Faith, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shragi, and thank you, Faith, for everything you've done. I see next on the list will be the elementary school. I see Lynn Pierce-Mori here, and I, Brian, I thought you had one other, but at this point, I don't believe she's here. So we'll, let's see. If she comes in, we can let her in and circle back.
Perfect. Can you hear me okay? My audio is funny. Okay, perfect. So I have, I have Lynn, and Lynn, I'm doing something a little bit different this year. I went to Barnes &amp; Noble, and I saw a book that I thought really represented you. So the book that I chose is this one here. It's called Sal. And I, I'm going to read to you the reasons why I selected this book. And then in the elementary office, we'll keep this book. I've got a few other books for some of our other retirees, a few different books, and people can sign the books for you, too. So Lynn, I chose this book, Sal, written by Dorian Browers, as a way to commemorate your retirement. The book starts by saying that we all have ships to sail in life's adventurous tail. The illustrations in the book show a child sailing out to sea. The child goes on quite an adventure. There are calm waters, some wild and fun rides, but there are also some strong waves and stormy seas. As I look at the illustrations during those rough times, I feel that it must have been pretty scary for that child. However, the author uses phrases such as, "follow your heart", "courage rarely steers you wrong", "adjust your sails", "there's so much more to learn", and "try your best". As a school social worker, you see very few calm and steady seas in your career. But Lynn, it is so important for you to know that you, much like the words the author of this book chose, you provide hope, sage advice, and a sense of comfort. Over the years, you've helped children, families, and staff navigate through traumatic and unspeakable events. You have advocated for the children who do not have a voice of their own, sometimes quite literally. You've assisted and sought assistance for families during hard times, and you speak your mind. You speak your mind because it's the right thing to do, even though it might not always be the popular thing to do. And most importantly, you've taught children the importance of being self-sufficient. For many in our community, life is a challenge. Your job is a thankless one, but it is my sincere hope that you look back on your career feeling rewarded, that you've gone above and beyond the call of duty, and you've made a lasting impact in Canadegwa. So thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Lynn. Well done, Brian. We'll go to the middle school next. I see Kim Burley is here, so John Arthur.
Hello, everyone. How are you all tonight?
John, nice to see you.
It is my pleasure to start the Weep Fest, baby. So I'll just start with, Kim was probably my first friend when I came here. And that pretty much sums up Kim. Couple of things I, that her, her peers want you to know. First of all, one of her peers' fondest memories is the ducks. Maybe you don't know, but every year, we get ducks in our little pond, and, and this teacher's fondest memory are Kim talking about the ducks and sharing a little ecology with the ducks with the kids every year. But watching ducks has become a yearly, annual tradition, so we're going to have to have Kim back as a sub when the ducks are in. Got me, Kim? Come on back now. One teacher said, "Math class was always fun when Kim and I co-taught." I think that's pretty important. Because, A, it's math. It's not always fun. Let's not kid ourselves, okay? But it can be if you have the right teachers and you can make it fun with lots of inventive things. Kim has been a rock for many people. I'm not sure that she knows it, but most of the highlight, Kim, is about your rock. She advocates for her students wholeheartedly. It's, I would say it's her most prevalent characteristic. Did you know that she loves to ride four-wheelers? I, I did not know that. I don't look at Kim early and go, "Four-wheelers, yeah, mud." I, I absolutely, I actually think probably the opposite, so go, Kim. She's looking forward to some time on the St. Lawrence. And finally, Kim loves desserts. Regularly, the seventh grade, you know, they're, they're a pretty tight-knit group down there. And they're, they always have an assortment, but apparently, it's the pie that Kim likes. So if you want to get her a great going-away gift, get her a gift certificate to a pie store, because she always, and I repeat, it says in quotes, "always saves room for the pie or dessert." So congratulations, Kim. You'll be missed, and we will always save a sub spot for you.
Thank you, John. I'm going to miss you all, too, especially you.
Thank you, Kim, and thank you, John. Up next, I think we'll move to Marissa Logue, and she has a full crew here. And so I think you have four or five to present. Hope you brought some water.
Hello, everybody. Want me to go in a certain order?
Whatever order you'd like.
Okay. Okay, so first up, I have Christine Betlam. Where's Chris on my screen? Where is she? So Mrs. Betlam has taught math at Canadegwa for 31 years. That's a long time. She started her teaching career at, on Granger Street, which is now the middle school, so that's exciting. She was honored as the National Honor Society Teacher of the Year in 2019. She was also my calculus teacher, so I dug into some old files. But check this out, Mrs. Betlam. It's my report card. Oh, wow. She gave me a, I mean, I earned 91 in AP Calculus. She left no comments because I blew her away right there. You see that? Excellent. But wait, this is the best part, Chris. Are you ready? I don't even know what this is from. This is her and me. Do you guys see this?
Wow.
Chris, what is this? We were dressed up fancy. Here's, here I am. Isn't that wonderful? Look at that. I don't know what this is from, but we, 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 maybe prom, maybe ball. I don't know. That's Roseanne Pelosi. I'm not really sure, but look at this. This is exciting, but I also know a fun fact about one of her classes one year. Juan begged her every day, begged her to go to her pool. Yep, go to the pool. Please, can we go to your pool? Please, please. And she said no. So guess what? The kids brought the pool to her, and they brought the pool and set it up outside of the window, outside of her classroom, and jumped in for a pool party at the end of the school year. That's awesome. But you were, you were a wonderful teacher. I'm lucky that I had you, and I can speak to, personally speak of your teaching, and thankful for your career. And 31 years is a long time, but darn it, girl, you deserve it. Have fun, enjoy, and congratulations to Mrs. Betlam.
Thank you, Marissa.
You're welcome. Next up, I have Mrs. Condon. Kim Condon, hi, there she is. Okay. So weird. I just feel like I need to be in person, but that's okay. We're getting there. So Kim has also spent the last 31 years teaching PE at Canadegwa. Did you and Chris start at the same year, Kim and Chris? You must have, because 31, 31, same year. So she started teaching, and she taught health and PE 31 years ago. Not only did she teach, she also coached. She was, coached the girls' soccer team for over 20 years, and probably coached a bunch of my friends that I graduated with. I checked my report cards. I never had you, Kim. As I always had Betty La Barge. I never had you as a teacher because I was ready to produce that as well. But I know you coached a lot of my friends, like Jen DiStefano and Chris Budd and Halleen Sheridan and all the girls, right? So she was a coach. She also coached girls across an indoor track along with modified sports along the way, lots of coaching. But she also takes a special place in our heart and takes time and coaches the unified basketball team as well, which is always a special moment, I know, for her, and, and the kids really connect with her on those. And you know what? When she got honored as the Teacher of the Year last week, I know that when she rounded the corner to 125, and all those life skills students were there to cheer her on, that was a special moment for her and for them, too, because they love you just as much as everybody else. So that was awesome. So you, as I just said, she was recently nominated as Teacher of the Year for 2021. Some fun facts about Kim. I, I didn't know. So Kim is going to miss her morning showers at school. She says it's the best shower she's ever taken in any of her houses, any of her anythings. She showers every morning at school. I think it's because she's working out beforehand, but I don't know, but she, it's, it must be a really good shower. So that's gonna, you know, you're gonna have to change up your routine there. She also, you know, back when she was in middle school, she told her father, she said, "Dad, I'm gonna be a PE teacher. I'm going to college, and I'm gonna be a PE teacher." And look at what, 31 years later, where she's retiring from the job that she did such an excellent job. And isn't that crazy that she knew back then that's what she wanted to do? She followed her heart. She followed her passion. And there she is. And I just have to say that she definitely bleeds cherry and gray. If anyone does, it's this girl. And she's been a dedicated educator, coach, and friend to many along the way, and we are so thankful for you, and congratulations, Kim Condon. Well deserved.
Thank you, Marissa. I will be sneaking into the shower whenever I can.
So check that. Good shower out. Wow. Okay, next up, I have Kelly Garbinski. I'm, I tried to find you on the screen. Oh, there you are. Hi, okay. So Kelly Garbinski's been a member of the math department here at Canadegwa since 1990. And I didn't have you either. I checked the report cards. I don't know how I missed you, but I, I checked. And previously coached the girls' swimming and diving program here at Canadegwa. She's been an assistant swim coach, participated in natural helpers. She helped out with that, supported the peer mediation program here at school, and mentored many fellow math teachers that they came to into the building. She's also worked on the SIP team and has been on the CTA negotiating team. So she's very active here at the academy and has worked hard in her time here at Canadegwa. So we thank her so much for being a dedicated teacher here at Canadegwa City School District, and congratulations, Mrs. Garbinski. Awesome job.
Thank you very much, Marissa.
You're welcome. And Sue Mintel. Where's Sue? Oh, hi, Sue. Okay, hi. So Sue joined Canadegwa in the fall of 2001 after teaching at Red Jacket. So her students and colleagues describe her as patient, compassionate, and a caring teacher. She brings the joy to teaching and a smile to work each day, even during this challenging school year. Additionally, she was named in 2019, 2020, the yearbook was dedicated to her, and she was also named Teacher of the Year this year because we had two, one in the fall, one in the spring, and both of them are on the screen tonight, so it's an honor to have them here with us. Funny story about Sue Mintel. I need to find a funny story about Kelly Garbinski. I got two weeks left, Kelly. You wait. Funny story about Sue. I, I, Sue, I said, "Sue, can you help us with this interview with the orchestra teacher? We have to hire an orchestra teacher," and her kids were in the orchestra, and she's like, "I'd love to. It's great." "Yes, I will help you." And that day, her daughter was scheduled for a C-section, and she was going to become a grandma, and I said, "Sue, you don't have to do this. We could, no, no." She was, she's like, "I got this. I was there." She was dedicated. Every time we had one of the interviewees leave the room, we're like, "What's the update? Does she have the baby yet?" And about nine o'clock, maybe three interviewees, and 9:00 AM, we got the news that Sue became a grandmother and has a beautiful granddaughter, and just shows a little bit of her dedication to the school and her family. So congratulations, Sue. Very, very happy and proud to have you and excited for your retirement.
Thank you very much.
I think those are all mine.
I believe they are. I'm trying to keep tabs on everything here, and Pat joined us a bit late, so we're so happy we can still recognize her. So Brian Ainsbury, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Hi, hi, Pat. How are you? Hey, Pat, so I did something a little bit different this year to, to honor our retirees. I just, before you entered, I was talking to Lynn Pierce-Mori, and I, I have a book dedicated to Lynn Pierce-Mori, and I picked one for you as well, and the name of it-
Oh, boy.
I know. Get ready. So the name of this book is called Someone Builds the Dream. And, and I wrote a little something about why I selected this book as a retirement gift for you, and it'll be in the office. And between now and the end of the school year, you know, everybody that you've worked with can come and sign this book. But, Pat, I've selected this book, Someone Builds the Dream, as a way to honor your retirement from Canadegwa City School District. This book was written by Lisa Wheeler and Lauren Long. The book emphasizes the fact that the world we live in requires builders, workers. As I read this book, I discovered that it's all about people who roll up their sleeves and get the work done. This book is about people who take pride in their work and what they do each day. I call these people the doers. I've said before that the role of the paraprofessional or the aide is oftentimes underappreciated. And from experience, Pat, you know that the aide with sometimes the most training and skill is given the most challenging assignments. When it comes to being a doer, two of the greatest strengths are reliability and work ethic. And this is something that someone demonstrates over time. And, Pat, you exemplify these strengths. In the last page of the book, the author includes the statement, "All across this great big world, there's lots of work to do. It takes a team to build a dream, a skilled, hard-working crew." So thank you, Pat, for being part of a critical team, a critical part of the team in Canadegwa, and best of luck on your next adventures.
Thank you so much. And, and I'm not sure what's going on with my picture. If it looks to you like it does to me, you can't tell who I am.
No, you look great. I can recognize you. You look great.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Pat.
Thank you, Pat, and thank you, Brian, and thank you to all of our retirees. When we total up the years of service that you've dedicated to the Canadegwa City School District, it is, it's just phenomenal. Literally hundreds of years of dedication and service to our district, and with that comes wisdom and knowledge, and, and just the ability to, to, to affect students in such a positive way. We may replace your position with a new hire, but we'll never re- We may replace your position with a new hire, but we'll never replace the skills and attributes you brought to our district. And for that, we'll be eternally grateful. Thank you so much. I'd like to, at this time, open up to the board for any comment.
Well, I wanted to recognize Cheryl first, um, and then I would be happy to. Um, Cheryl Burks is one of a kind. Cheryl was a teacher in our business department for over thirty years. During that time, she was the lead teacher for the department and also CTA president for fourteen years. After retirement and loving on her grandchildren for a year, she actually chose to run, run for the Board of Education. And she served her five-year term with devotion, with an incredible work ethic, and always as an incredibly reliable colleague. She then volunteered to bridge the one-year gap when a seat was vacated a year early. Cheryl is part of a five-generation of Braves. Her mom, children, and grandchildren, and her grandma, who worked in the kitchen for years and was known as the baker of sweet treats, a tradition Cheryl has also carried on. Um, Cheryl is an unflappable ray of sunshine, a completely reliable colleague, a delightful human being, and one of the most genuinely wonderful people I know. We benefited from her wisdom, her reverence for excellent public education and teaching, and her love of this district. Cheryl CA loves you. Congratulations again on your retirement.
Thank you, Jamie. And it's, bottom line, it's always about the kids. You know, that's, that's why I do what I do, because there's so much that we have to provide for our kids, and we, Canadegwa does it in the best fashion ever. And just one other thing I wanted to share, Chris Betlam's class that had the swimming pool. Well, I happen to have a relative that now works for the district, who was part of that little instigation of a swimming pool. I remember that fondly.
True story.
True story.
No surprise.
Not a bit. But thank you very much, Jamie. Thank you, everybody. It's been a blessing to work with all of you. Great bunch of people. Thank you so much. And I'm going nowhere, so, you know.
We will call upon you. And speaking of going nowhere, we wish you all the best. And, uh, we tell you from the bottoms of our hearts that you will always be part of the fabric of our lives. Doesn't matter how far you travel or where you go, what's next in this great adventure in your lives, you will always be with us. And if you choose and want to be an active part of the district, we will always find a place for you. And if you choose to have the district in your rearview mirror as you drive away, literally or figuratively, that's just fine. Just know that you'll always be right here with us. And we are so grateful for everything you've done here. Um, thank you so much. We're ha- happy to have anybody say word if they want to, or you can also just head off, whatever you'd like. So as I, as I always say, when someone is with us, you're welcome to stay and also welcome to go.
Thank you.
I would like to say thank you. It's been a pleasure to spend thirty-two years here.
Thanks, Kim. It's been a pleasure on our side too. Thank you. Jamie, any last words from you as we jump to the next part of our agenda here?
I would just say, uh, what strikes me is kind of the emotion behind it all.
Yeah.
Become an identity. It's kind of who you are. It's what you do. It's part of your identity, like I said, and, and not lost on all of it, is the relationships that you forge with one another, with our community, and with our students. And so, uh, if you'd let us, we, we'd rather to keep those relationships strong and going well into retirement. So please stay in touch, come visit. Uh, we'll, we'll certainly put you to work if you're looking for work in retirement. But if nothing else, um, just to keep those friendships going, um, thank you for everything you've done.
Good night, everybody. Thanks for being with us.
That's so much more fun in person, although that was nice.
Yeah.
I cannot wait until we're doing that in person.
Same. All right, we have a consensus agenda and supplementals, and there is an, an amendment um, that was a typo that I hope everybody got the email about in the contract. Okay, so I'll ask for motions, please. Michelle and Jen, questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed, that carries unanimously? Thank you. Board reports, but Jamie, do you wanna let principals go, or are they staying for anything in particular?
I'm happy to let them go. They work so many hours, but please go be with your families, and, uh, thanks for all you do.
Yeah, thanks for being with us tonight. Um, audit committee, Michelle, please.
Okay, unmuted. Um, so once again, we had a finances fund committee. Um, a little bit more fun because of federal stimulus dollars coming into play, so that was the good news. We did go over some highlights on UPK expansion, which is one of the areas that we have some dollars that we can extend. Um, we are looking to, um, build on to our UPK program. And, um, I know there's a lot of off-site places we've reached out to, to see, um, who may be interested. And we also have some in-district placements, so, um, that's exciting. In order to maximize the funding, I believe we need around a hundred and thirty-two students to participate. And currently, we have about a hundred and twenty, um, half-day slots. So, um, does that sound right? Someone not, yep, Matt, Matt Fitch is like nodding his head, so I trust Matt. So, um, so, so we had a great report on UPK, which is fabulous, because if we can get our learners learning earlier, then even better. Um, we also reviewed federal stimulus dollars that came in. To make a long story short, there's two different buckets of funding that, um, can be used for things like learning loss, professional development, maintaining jobs, capital work, um, like improved ventilation, those kinds of things. So we are gonna do our best to try to spend what we can, as soon as we can spend it, to further, um, help build out what we can in the district and focus on educating our children. Um, we briefly reviewed fund balance projections and the reserve plan, which is posted online or will be shortly for all to see. The plan is very comprehensive. It's very, very well-written and gives you an idea of where we actually put some of those dollars that we want to put in those, what I call special savings accounts. And we took, um, went over our audit self-evaluation, and that was really the highlights from the audit committee meeting.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Um, Jamie, did you wanna cover anything from policy on behalf of Beth?
So for policy, one of the things we'll be bringing to the committee, uh, is the naming of facilities and, uh, memorials of, around facilities. Um, because we're a TIG district, and TIG is something we've had, it's, you know, trauma and grief. It's something we've, you know, we've been that sort of a district for a while now. Um, we wanna revisit the policy around naming facilities, because there's language and protocols within TIG that would strongly recommend or discourage districts from doing that. Uh, and there's a variety of reasons for it. And so I think what we'll do this summer, when timing is a little bit better, is we'll do a presentation with the board specific to TIG. Uh, and overall, what, what is TIG overall, but then also hone in on the part around naming of facilities, so that the board can have some dialogue and we can revisit our policy around that. Um, you know, the difficulty is, you know, when you name a facility or, or there's maybe a bench in honor of, or a garden in honor of, um, you know, is it maintained over time? Uh, is there equity within all that in, in terms of, you know, do you do it for one but not another, uh, staff member or, or student? There's just a lot of pieces that need to be considered and we need to revisit it. And so for policy committee, we, we spent a lot of time just kind of talking about that. Uh, and we thought that would be the best avenue, is to do a presentation with the board specific to what is TIG, and then kind of narrow in on naming of facilities so that we can revisit the policy.
Thank you, Jamie. Uh, let's see, diversity, equity, and inclusion, Julian, please.
So the advisory committee or advisory group has been meeting pretty regularly to finalize, um, the DEI plan that we're gonna be presenting, or is going to be presented to the board in a couple of weeks. Um, focusing in particular on goals for next year, and then also putting in place a structure that will help us carry forward that work. But there'll be more details in our meeting in a couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you. Jen, anything from COVID nineteen?
So really quickly, I would like to, to thank Mike McLean and the custodial leadership in PES, because they gathered a boatload of data over the last, um, several weeks as PES is repopulated. Um, took that data and did some math magic on that, um, and did some adjustments to some unit events in some of the rooms. Um, really put some strategy in place that means that now, today, in PES, we've got the best error we can have, and as we move forward with the capital project, we can even make it better. And we wouldn't have been able to do that without the effort of, of Mike and, and the custodial staff. And I gotta tell you, I would hire that custodial staff any day to take data points for me. They do better than some of my RIT students. They did a great job.
Great. Thank you. Uh, anything in closing from you, Jamie?
I, I do not believe so. Thanks, everybody, and please, um, continue to watch developments out of the state. It's, uh, seems to be changing rapidly and quite, quite often. So, uh, thanks for your patience and understanding as we try to dissect what it all says.
Great. Thank you, everybody. I'll call, ask for motions to adjourn, please. Michelle and Milton, all in favor. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.